At this time, I will accept a motion to end the closed session pursuant to Minnesota Statute 13D.05 subdivision three to discuss the purchase or sale of real or personal property. Do I hear such a motion?
So moved.
Motion by Commissioner Winger and second by Commissioner Carlson. All in favor of going into closed session, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? All right, we will move over to the workroom for the closed session. At this time, I will accept a motion to end the closed session pursuant to Minnesota Statute 13D.05 subdivision three to discuss the purchase or sale of real or personal property. Do I hear such a motion?
So moved.
Motion by Commissioner Carlson, I hear a second.
Second.
Second by Commissioner Winger. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? All right, we are back in the open work session meeting. Next on the agenda is introduction of new employees. Do we have any new employees? Not seeing any, so we'll move on to identify future work meeting topics. Does anybody have any future work meeting topics they would like to bring up? Commissioner Carlson.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. In my investigation of the opioid settlement funds, I had the pleasure of visiting with Chris Earl at Face It Together today.
Oh.
Had a nice conversation with him and a nice visit of their facilities there. And I asked him if he had any desire to come to the board and kind of explain what they do. And he said, yeah, he'd love to do that.
Well, hello and thanks for having me. I'm going to talk to you all about BASK. My name's Kim Graham and I've been with BASK since January of 2024, so still fairly new in the role. I did have 20 years of experience running North Home Children and Family Services here in Bemidji and in Duluth. So I had that and then also the Gilflyn Center and Evergreen House and Clearwater County. So I've done all of that. So just tell you a little bit about BASK. I don't know what you know or what you don't know, but BASK was started in 1998 through a joint powers agreement. And the joint powers agreement had to be a county, a school district, a mental health agency, a community action agency, and Minnesota Department of Corrections. So that's who started our BASK back in 98. So with that, there's 90 Minnesota collaboratives in Minnesota. And 36 collaboratives are both children's mental health and family services. And so we are one of those, one of 36 that have both. Our mission is to improve the well-being of children, youth, and families in Beltrami County through collaboration of resources and services. So what I consider myself is the hub for all the services, the service providers, the county probation, just everyone that needs services and I can get people working with each other. I can find out who needs funding, where's gaps, and kind of just keep that flowing in. So that's kind of what my role is as the BASK director. Our funding sources are integrated funds, so we get funds from our partner contributions. We get funds from our local collaborative time study dollars, and I'll explain that a little bit. And child welfare targeted case management and grants. So that's what funds BASK. I have four staff and five, including me, so that's what we have in our office. Our governing board is Beltrami County Social Services and Public Health, and we have a representative from each of these places. School districts Bemidji, Black Duck, Kellier, and Red Lake. And then BRIC, which is the Bemidji Regional Inter-District Council, and Sanford Behavioral Health, and Stellar Human Services, along with BiCap, United Way of Bemidji, Department of Corrections, and a foster care representative. So I now have 15 board members, so I can go there. BASK has a couple of programs. One program that we do is the diversion program. And I know we came and talked to you about funding about that because we lost our Title II funding, which we had had since 2013 to run our program. And that was, the state didn't have enough funding, so they didn't put anything towards that. So that's why, you know, we received some more funding from the county attorney's office, which was great for this year. We also are working with Beltrami County Public Health on a cannabis substance use prevention grant. So I have a staff along with myself. I'm doing some of the grant coordination and my staff is working with a social worker from Public Health. And they are, actually, the meeting right now is pretty cool. They're forming a youth advisory committee. So we did a survey of Black Duck School, Voyagers, Trek, and Bemidji High School. We asked about 15 questions, kind of what they think their peers do. It wasn't personal questions, more of like, what do you see, what do you think is common, and what's not common? And then at the end of it was, do you want to join this youth advisory? And I think what I'm hearing is we have about 12 kids that are willing to do that this summer. So both my case manager and the social worker will work with these kids throughout the summer to figure out what kind of peer voice can we get out there about prevention? What's going to work, what's not going to work? Is it social media? Is it radio ads? We already know it's not radio ads. So it's just a lot of different areas. And we're going to then hopefully in the fall, these kids will be able to present to all the high schools, the middle schools, elementary schools, you know, just get the information out about prevention use. So that's pretty exciting. So that's part of what diversion is being covered under. We also have, we just were awarded the dual status youth grant. And that is for any youth that's in probation and social services, the dual status. And so BASK's role is to work with both probation and social services, to come up with one plan, do a collaborative conference, and work on the issues that the youth is having. So that's pretty exciting. We had this back in 2013. We still do it now. In 2013, we had someone from the Robert F. Kennedy National Resource Center for Juvenile Justice come and work with Beltrami County on that program, you know, specifically. And now we're awarded again. They'll be coming back and just seeing what we've done, what we've put in place, and to see if, where we can enhance things. So that's pretty exciting. I'm also going to be applying in the process right now, applying for the community, our community, Community Crime Intervention and Prevention Grant. And that will help then hopefully for '26 and '27 cover, you know, the bulk of our diversion program. So the diversion program, we have an intervention program specialist. And she gets her referrals from the Assistant County Attorney. He sends it over. He looks at the referrals by looking at the citation and deciding which cases should go right to court and which cases might be a first offense, it might be a minor offense, might be traffic, it might be vaping, it might be, you know, disorderly conduct, that, truancy. So those kind of cases, my case manager then works with the youth and their parent, does an intake and finds out what's going to be the best way to work with these kids. Is it going to be through just educational classes or educational classes and, you know, a couple of months of case management? Just depends on the youth and what the offense was and what supports. She also helps get the families, mental health services, or if they have, you know, housing issues or transportation issues, so she can work with the whole family on that too. So that's really important. We also have her at the high school three days a week. And that's been really helpful because she's working with the resource officer on kids that are just about to get a citation or just going down the wrong path. She can start meeting with them right away and just figuring out, you know, what can we do to deter you from going that way? What do you need? What does your family need? So that's been pretty exciting. That's new this year. Let's see, we also have the attendance support case management at the middle school. And that's funded by the school district. Plus, I just received a new grant. It's the Can Renew Grant. And that's from the Office of Cannabis Management. And it's going to be for a peer-led group where some kids are going to get, like, I don't know how they're going to be picked yet because we're going to develop it this summer. We just got the grant this last week. So starting July 1st, we'll have my support case manager come in, develop the program with me, and figure out, you know, okay, what are the kids that we're going to work with? And what are those kids then going to do? Are they going to do radio ads? Or are they going to do videos for social media? Are they going to come talk to people at the county fair? Are they going to go talk to elementary kids? So it's just getting that peer voice out there again and teaching leadership. So that's going to be a very positive thing. And that's, like I said, based at the middle school. And then I have the engagement case manager, which last year and the years before, it was called the re-engagement case manager. And the re-engagement case manager worked at the high school of only ninth and 10th graders. It was on truancy. How are we going to keep these kids in school? And then when I started last year, I kind of was reading some of her outcomes and what was really working. And I thought, we need to go younger. So I got us into J.W. Smith and Jeanne Dillon. And I have the engagement, instead of re-engagement, just let's keep them engaged and let's get them engaged in school and find out why they're not coming to school. I know my engagement case manager has already done a wonderful job of getting, you know, different services, housing for people, transportation, helping with cell phones. She's been able to help when there's like LISA outbreaks, getting them all the materials they need to stop that. And her goal is to meet with them individually once a week, each kid, and communicating with parents. And so far, what she's reported this school year is that the guardians are really involved and they're excited that there's someone that they can reach out to. That's positive. And the other one was, kind of just fell in my lap, I don't know how, but it was the Eliminating Racial Disparities Initiative. And that was formed by the Juvenile Justice Advisory Committee that talks to legislation and to the governor and just talks about different priority areas. And one of the priority areas was to eliminate racial disparities in juvenile justice. And so the state had funding that they were going to give to the RFK National Resource Center for Juvenile Justice, give that funding to them. And then there was two counties that were picked in the state of Minnesota. We were not one of them. We didn't even apply for it. I'd never even heard of it because this was before I even started with BASK. And one of the counties dropped out and I happened to be talking to the executive director from RFK when I was losing the money for diversion and asking like, what can I do? What, you know, what are some areas? And he started learning about what we were doing. And he already remembered being here with dual, you know, status youth before. So he kept that in his head, I guess. And then when this other county dropped out, they called me and said, "Beltrami County wanted to do it." So reached out to David Hanson and Trish Hanson and Anne and just figured out, you know, is this something we want our county to do? And we do. And so we had our first stakeholders meeting and that included local agencies. Included Leech Lake, Red Lake, the school district, probation, of course, social services, public health. So we had quite a few members. I think we had 32 people in this room at the first meeting. And just John Tool is the CEO's name. And he came in and just discussed what the project was going to look like. So he made me the project coordinator, so now I'm in charge of that program. But it's exciting because the outcome is supposed to be for the state to have a model to reduce racial disparities in juvenile justice. So our model in Norman Counties, we're going to put them together and hopefully we'll get other counties in the state to follow that. And that's their goal. Did want to tell you about local collaborative time study, which is called LCTS. And that's federal funds and that comes from Medicaid and 4E funding for kids in foster care and adoption. And public health, probation, and school districts, depending on criteria, you can become a participant. And if you become a participant, then you're going to get random emails and you have to just fill out, what, random moment, what are you doing right now? And there's A through J you could pick and there's criteria for each one. And when I started, Bemidji School District had 55 participants. When I figured out what was going on, read it through, we're now up to 180 participants. And those 180 participants have brought in so much more money that we're going to be able to use those funds and the funds that we have previous to fund different programs. So what BASK does is in July, we sent out an application to schools, to teachers, to mental health agencies, to local agencies. You know, are there any programs that you want to have funded to help with children and families? And then you tell us what it is, fill out, you know, this application. Then I, and my board has an allocation committee team. And we get together and we rethrow the applications, we rate them, and we decide who are we going to fund and how much we're going to fund. So last year, we funded 14 projects, 200,000 of those dollars going to those projects. This 2026, I've already updated by 80,000. So we'll have $280,000 to go into programming. So I'm hoping we're going to see some new programming, as well as some of the programs that really are working. Some of the programs, just to put a couple out there. We fund Evergreen for their family support coach. We fund the Boys and Girls Club for Trusting Police Program, where they have law enforcement come in and play basketball with the kids and be at the different events and just make, you know, make the kids feel comfortable around law enforcement. We also have Circle of Parenting through BECK, which is the Beltrami Early, Bemidji Early Childhood Collaborative. And so those are just a few of the projects that we have funded. But we do fund social work position at the school district. There's so many different funds or programs that we fund. So that was a lot. I'm sure, like, I lost you a while ago, but please let me know if you have any questions.
Kim, how do you choose? I know you mentioned a lot about the Bemidji area schools and stuff. And do you reach out to Red Lake, Kellier, the other schools? Or do they have somebody else, a different program from a different area that covers them?
No, we fund programs for them. So in Kellier, it's unlocking school career success. And it's part of one of their social positions that works with 11th, 12th graders to figure out, you know, let's see what the next step is after high school. So we fund that. Black Duck, we fund mental health services to go into their school. So Stellar, North Homes, and Sanford all have the school-linked mental health grant. And a lot of that grant doesn't cover a lot of the supervisory things that mental health agencies have to have in order to get, you know, clinicians out to the different schools. And so the funds that we have and the programs that we fund, BASK, that helps the mental health agencies, that makes them able to do more services in the school. Red Lake, we did do a trauma-informed behavioral. It was a training for their peer counselors, so they had three people trained through this curriculum.
How about the Cast Lake? I know they're technically not in our county, but a lot of the residents that go to Cast Lake Schools are in Beltrami County. They're in my district. And I'm just wondering, do you do anything with Cast Lake Schools or?
Beltrami County does not, but the Cast Lake Collaborative does.
Okay.
So there is a.
There's another one over there.
The county collaborative does have that. BRIC is also in seven other counties. So because BRIC is a school district in Beltrami County, but they're serving in Pope County, Norman County, Lake of the Woods, Hubbard, Clearwater, and something else, something else. But they, because of that, they have participants that do that time study, which then money comes in and then we send back to those schools.
Others have questions? For Kim, Commissioner Sumner?
Oh, Mr. Chair, thanks. So I'm glad you asked a question about other schools because I was part of my, my questions was the case re-engagement worker. How do they only work with J.W. and Jeanne Dillon? But it sounds like BASK works with the other school districts. And I think oftentimes we forget that the Grigla School District also serves residents from Beltrami County. It's kind of curious, do you do any work with them or is it?
The which?
The Grigla School District?
Yeah, no, we don't do anything with Grigla. So that is Marshall County.
Yeah, it's Marshall County, but.
Yeah, it's the same thing. So each county has a colla, well, should have their own collaborative, but there are only 90 collaboratives. Most collaboratives are either one or the other. We do children's mental health and family services. And also with my role is, you know, I find out the schools needing, you know, we need more mental health here. We need, you know, it might be someone that didn't put a program to get funded, but I'll call Stellar, North Homes, or Sanford, say, okay, who do you have? How can we get you over there? This is what their need is. So I kind of help, even if it's not through funding, it's through my resources and partnerships.
And you mentioned that in '25, '26, you're allocating $280,000.
In '25, we did allocate 200,000 for programs.
And then in '26, it's going to be 280 and $640. So I'm just kind of curious about, do you send out RFPs or how does?
Starting July, I will send out RFPs and I send them to everybody on my, every list serve I have.
So is there some sort of criteria that they need to?
They just need to fill out the application. It needs to be about children's mental health, family programming, or health. And so.
And who decides on which programs get funded, how much they get funded? And if they're a repeat grant applicant or things like that?
Sure. So on the application, it does ask, are you repeat? What amount are you asking for? Show us your budget, like what that's for. I think this last go-around, we can only not fund one of the programs I put in, but it didn't meet the criteria. They wanted us to purchase them a van for their agency so that they could transport clients, much needed, but we can't start buying cars for everybody. So that's the only one that didn't get funded, but it's our allocation committee from the board. So I have five members on that. And we all read them, get together, review them, we discuss them. Some programs that they have to report twice a month or twice a year to me about how everything is going. And so I bring those outcomes. And if it's something that is not working, we might say, you know what? We like what you had in mind, but can you do this or this? And then resubmit kind of thing.
Okay, so you have a sub.
A helpful kind of thing.
You have a subcommittee that reports to the full board?
Full board, yep.
And they're pretty supportive of?
Very supportive, yeah.
Okay. And the final question was, you mentioned the time study and its dependence on Medicaid. Do you, how much do you receive? Do you, how much do you receive from the time study and Medicaid and?
So in twenty twenty-four portal, including the multi-county, the seven other counties is four hundred thousand. That was up from two hundred and eighty thousand from the year before that. And that was a lot to do with how I've been reaching out to the schools and getting more participants.
But we, we, we're kind of dependent on Medicaid then, right? And it'd be such a sad thing, you know?
It would be very, very sad.
It's a good thing that Medicaid isn't going to be cut as to fraud and abuse in Medicaid. Anybody else have any questions for Kim? All right. Thank you very much for your presentation.
I really appreciate it. Have a great day.
Thank you. Next up, we have North Star Neighbors. I don't know if Anne or Cory or both of you or?
Good afternoon, Mr. Chair, Commissioners.
Thank you.
I'm really excited to be here today. I've been wanting to share North Star Neighbors with everyone we can across our twelve-county region for, for a while. I have not been to this, to this board yet. I know many of you, my name's Cory Bushy. I'm with the Northwest Minnesota Foundation. And as part of my role, I'm also the executive director of North Star Neighbors, which we're going to talk about tonight, which is a, this afternoon, which is a subsidiary of the Northwest Minnesota Foundation. So we could go to the next? Or do I get a clicker? Okay, cool. Thank you. So just, I want to briefly share background and then get into the kind of nuts and bolts of what we're doing. Many of you have known that the Northwest Minnesota Foundation has been working on housing issues since twenty eighteen. We've done everything from low interest lending to support developers. But also spent some significant time and resources in the service coordination through the Northwest Continuum of Care and leading that. And through everything we could learn about housing and homelessness, we continued to learn that there just isn't enough homes. So in twenty twenty-two, we wanted to kind of renew our effort from twenty eighteen to twenty, is from not just focusing on coordinating services, but really figuring out how we could get units on the ground. So it was around twenty twenty-two, we started trying to look for models, what, what could work. And we found this model of community land trust that is all over Minnesota, all over the nation. There's thousands, probably fourteen hundred or so land trust homes in Minnesota. I don't know how many there are across the U.S. But through this, you know, really I just started calling Minnesota Housing and I'm like, we need more money up here. I, I want a million bucks and I'll make sure ten homes get built. I'll just find a way to do it. And they're like, you need a community land trust. So in that same week, we had a partner from the Grand Forks community that had a community land trust and they called and said, hey, we're, we're looking to expand and we want to get into Minnesota. And from there, we were able to, rather than do a grant to fund them, we started a partnership. And we started really looking into what would it look like to do a community land trust at a region-wide scale. So in twenty twenty-three, the Northwest Minnesota Foundation, after, you know, we took six months of significant business planning and, and, you know, opportunity cost analysis to determine that it was the right move to, to start this community land trust and get into housing development. So I think it was June of twenty twenty-three, we, you know, we applied for all of our paperwork to be a, a new nonprofit in Minnesota. In July of twenty twenty-three, we put in our first grant application to Minnesota Housing. And then in December of twenty twenty-three, we were awarded our first nearly two million dollars in grant funding and over a million dollars in loans. We have since completed two home, two home builds, have sold one. Those are in Thief River Falls. So we have under, you know, combs under construction in Thief River Falls and Red Lake Falls. And we're just about to sell our second home in about two weeks. And, and the rest are, are under construction and we expect them to sell very soon. And then we're breaking ground right now in Roseau, just started four up there. And we're going to start four in East Grand Forks soon. And now we're looking to continue to expand as well. So go to the next slide. Kind of thinking about, you know, why did we do this? And how did we get through all that, you know, all that planning? As we started to look across the region and I think these numbers ring pretty true for Beltrami County as well. We really looked at, there's about this, there's this missing middle gap of about thirty percent of the region that maybe earns between sixty-five thousand and a hundred thousand. And those folks right now are priced out of buying a home. There's not a program that's going to get them into a home. They make too much for the, for other certain programs or they don't make enough to, to afford the cost of a home right now, right? So we're, now we're seeing a hundred and seventy-five thousand dollar mortgage with current interest rates right now being about an eighteen hundred dollar a month payment for someone. And the folks that are in this income range of about sixty-five to a hundred thousand just can't afford that amount. So that was the reason why. We just make housing affordable. We talked about that. So I'll get to keep moving forward. So the community land trust is a long-term solution for affordable homeownership. So I think we do that through two ways. We retain ownership of the land and we preserve and, and we provide the upfront subsidy, which is how we preserve the affordability for generations. I have a better slide I want to get to. So we use two tools to, to ma, to create and maintain the affordability. The first, the first tool is first mortgage principal reduction gap subsidy. This is what may seem more like a down payment assistance program, except the, because we're doing this for perpetual affordability, we're able to bring, you know, closer to a hundred and fifty thousand dollars into a home to, to buy down that mortgage rate for the, what it costs us to build it, right? So if we, if we got to put a, if we, if it costs us three hundred and fifty thousand to build a home, we're going to try to put it on the market for anywhere between like one seventy-five and two twenty-five for that first homeowner. And then we retain ownership of the land. And through that is where we get into what really makes the CLT, the, in the perpetual, perpetual affordability is the shared equity model that exists within that ground lease. So going to the way this shared equity resale formula works, in this example, we have a initial purchase of a fee simple home is valued at three hundred thousand dollars. So it's a, we built it, we were able to build it for three hundred thousand dollars. And we're able to put it on the market for this first CLT buyer for a hundred and eighty thousand dollars. So we brought in a hundred and twenty thousand dollars of subsidy made, you know, in this case, we can say it was made up of a, of a, a grant from, you know, local fundraising. Let's say now we fast forward five years and that home now is valued at three hundred and forty thousand dollars. So the, the market rate value, if, if, if you will. From that, we do a resale calculation, which we match all the other Minnesota community land trusts at a twenty-five percent shared equity resale formula. So in this case, the house is appreciated for forty, forty thousand dollars. So the, that initial buyer, when they go to sell the home, they will receive the hundred and eighty thousand dollars plus the ten thousand dollars of appreciation that was earned over the time that they owned it. So now that gets us to what we call the formula price of a hundred and ninety thousand. And that's when we put the house back on the market for the next home buyer five years later.
Cory?
Yep.
Question. So if the initial home buyer was only paying sixty percent of the, of the assessed or appraised or whatever value, why are we giving them twenty-five percent of the appreciation in the value? You know, if it, you know, if it was forty percent subsidized for them to buy it for only a hundred and eighty thousand, why would they receive twenty-five percent of the, of the appreciation of, why wouldn't they receive a smaller amount of that?
The, the standard CLT model is twenty-five percent
Okay.
across the, that's kind of a, you know, there's, there's, there's a few different models of doing that. We chose to stick with what was familiar in Minnesota.
Okay.
Other models, there, there's kind of a, there's like time-based formulas that basically says we're going to ensure that your, your home appreciates at point oh four percent every year. And you could just tell someone like, in twenty years from now, you're going to get this much for your house.
Okay.
Because there's another way to do it. I guess, I've never been asked that question, Craig, of, of why not match the, the, the subsidy? But in, in a case from an administrative standpoint, from a CLT, to have every home sale have a different model, I think that would be pretty burdensome versus just kind of having a shared thing that we can, you know, agree is twenty-five percent is the right, the right percent we've come to.
Commissioner Carlson, did you have a question?
Yep. Thank you, Mr. Chair. So Cory, help me understand, home buyer gets in the house and let's say they're ten years, their financial situation improves substantially, hopefully for them. And they're ready to buy a newer, bigger, better house. And then they can, and then the price of this house went to three hundred and forty thousand. And you're saying that the only thing that they're going to be able to get out of this is the hundred and eighty that they had into it, plus the twenty-five percent appreciation? Uh, okay. That's actually, Craig, I think it's the other way.
It's almost, it's almost It's the opposite of what I was originally, yeah.
Yeah.
So there's sixty percent of the, of the forty thousand. So it'd be, you know, twenty-four thousand of the forty thousand is what I would think they would get.
So it seems like
I can't do math in my head as fast as you guys can.
Well, anyway, so, and then.
Are, are you, are you wondering why anybody would ever want to do this? Is that kind of like, you're not getting enough out of it or?
Well, they're getting, they're getting the ability to get a nice home when they couldn't really otherwise afford it. And, and so, I mean, I get that, you know, they're, they're not getting as much of the profit, if you will, because of the benefit that they got in the first place. And, and so that, I mean, there's, there's justification for it, I think. But it's just, you know, math, just, you know, for me, I think, well, if I paid sixty percent of the place, I should get sixty percent of the appreciation.
It's the, the, it's, yeah, I think, I think you're right. It's the opposite of what you originally
What I originally was saying, yeah.
And, and that, and, and that's be, that's part of the deal because with, without this program, they were unlikely to ever buy a home, right? So the CLT model doesn't, it, it's really hard to compare to traditional homeownership. You know, anybody that came to us that is, you know, looking to buy one of our homes and we're like, hey, looks, looks like you could buy a three hundred and twenty-five thousand dollar house outright. You know, we tell them to do that, right? But these folks are, their option is to rent or to have this, the, this option to buy a home, right? So we, we're giving them that ability to buy that first home and, and build equity and, you know, make a payment for five years. Do all those things and, and then, you know, they can live in it for as long as they want. But, you know, generally I think we're going to see, especially in the, the first time home buyer, we're going to definitely see, you know, five, six, seven years, they might move on.
So is there restrictions then? Because they don't own the land, is there restrictions on them being able to put up a detached garage, a chicken coop?
Yes, there, there is. We, we would work with them on that. And, and, and part of that is that we want to ensure they're reimbursed fairly for, for those costs. We do have a, a capital improvement policy that kind of helps them define like, you know, painting the house isn't, it's maintenance. We're not going to, you know, reimburse you because you bought paint. But if you, you know, really improved a bathroom or finished a basement or something that we didn't do, built a garage, we come to an agreement on what the cost of that was to them at that time, so that they're able to get reimbursed for that too. So let's, let's just say in a, in a crazy world, it costs twenty thousand dollars to build a garage because they did it all themselves or whatever, right? We're going to get them that twenty thousand dollars back when they go to sell.
So what about the reverse case? They don't do the painting, they don't do the upkeep and the place kind of starts falling apart a little bit. Then, now what happens?
Yeah, it's, so we have a, we have, the, the best part about CLT is, is we like to think that we have a strong stewardship model where we're going to be able to maintain some contact and say, hey, things, things don't look to be going good. Is this, is this the right situation for you? So we might be able to get ahead of that. In the other case, it works kind of the same way. If you, as, as traditional homeownership, except we're going to lose with them, right? The value of the home is going to go down and they're not going to get any appreciation because it, it's sold for less than they paid for it, right? So, but they, they share in those losses with us, right? So.
Commissioner Winger, any question?
Thank you.
What if they choose to just stay in this and never leave it? Do they have to continue to pay you then for the land after this is over or?
Yeah, that's a good question. There, there is a lease fee. It's a, it's thirty dollars a month. It's, it's not meant to be like fair market value of the land or anything. It's, it's more of a, they're making that lease fee. We know things are probably, that payment, we know things are probably going good. Some other things that indicators to John's point too of, we, we also are listed with the mortgage as the first contact. So the bank is allowed to contact the land trust if they have any suspicion that things are going to go delinquent or, or things like, or payments are going to be missed so that we can then work with that homeowner. There, I think, I want to think back to like, if we want to even bring up like the two thousand eight foreclosure crisis. At that time, when, when homes were foreclosure at like a ten percent rate or something like that, it was less than two percent for CLT homes. And the reason for that is that ongoing stewardship and we, us having the ability to go in and say, maybe this isn't the right spot for you anymore, where we can actually take first right of refusal and say, hey, we'll buy you out. And we'll, we'll, you know, hopefully you can go get an apartment or a, a situation that's better for you and, and we'll resell this to, to another, a, a, another buyer.
Commissioner Carlson?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. So Cory, sounds like a really good program. How do you, how do you decide who gets it? I mean, it certainly seemed like there'd be an awful lot of people that would fit that category. And what, is it a lottery?
So, you know, John, I thought, I thought it's, what we're finding is it's, there's less people than we thought. We, we're still having great interest, but, you know, even when we're able to get these homes down to a hundred and seventy-five thousand right now with the seven and a half percent interest rate, if you, you know, if your credit's not perfect, it's still taking a, a, a big decision for people to want to really pull the trigger and still, and still buy right now. So it's, it's not as big of a waitlist, but the, the general policy answer to your question is it's first ready, first served. So the first person that has the, you know, the information from their bank that says they can afford what we need, what, what we need to sell them the house for, it enters a purchase agreement. So, you know, if there's three people that are looking at the house, you know, the first one that comes with, you know, all their ducks in a row in financing, they, they'd be the ones that sign the purchase agreement first.
So do you have a waiting list already?
No, not, not, not in, not in Beltrami County. We've not advert, you know, we've not advertised or marketed this program at all. And then in, in our other counties, I wouldn't say we have a waitlist. We have, we have definitely folks that are interested. And we've had, you know, a couple buyers interested in the same house. But it's, it's not, it, it's not a huge waitlist by any means. And, and part of that is we've been doing some social media marketing, some radio ads, but we, you know, we're also not ready to be inundated and we don't have the resources or the, the inventory to have a huge waiting list either. So we haven't really been looking for one at this time.
Hey Cory, when, you know, I don't know about the other commissioners, but, you know, when I first got married, it started out, we were in a fairly ratty old trailer house and, and that on a piece of property and, and, you know, and we're able to get into our first home and, and then onto our current place. But is there anything with regard to the double wides or trailer homes or, I mean, that, they're certainly less expensive than an actual home. And I just wondering if there's any, any thought process about doing anything like that?
So we definitely have some partnerships with like the Northwest Service Cooperative that is working statewide to, to work on those things. That's just a little bit different market than what we're looking for. Part of it is because of the land ownership thing, right? And then the other thing we've, you know, on
But if you're doing a lease anyways for land, you know, instead of putting a full-blown expensive house, you put a double wide on there and have it be a lot less expensive and more available. I mean, yeah, they're not as nice as a, as a quote unquote real house, but I mean, it certainly is still better than, you know, renting a place and actually having some, some value.
So I'd have to do some more research into costs right now, Craig, but I know the foundation and, and some other folks that we've talked the foundation and, and some other folks that we've talked to and we participated in some projects. Um, but, but by the time you put up the foundation and everything to meet building code and move that double wide on, there wasn't as big of a savings as, as people were really thinking there would be.
Oh, really?
Um, just, you're, because you're still going to pay, you're, you're going to maybe pay one seventy-five for the double wide and you're still, I mean, maybe cheaper, but you're still going to pay a hundred grand in site work and everything else.
And if you had the, I mean, the subsidy type stuff that you're talking about and could get it down into, you know, instead of it being a hundred and eighty thousand dollars for the person buying it, it's a hundred and twenty thousand, you know.
The, depending on, um, depending on the funding sources and the, the, the codes we have to meet and things like that, it's something we definitely could look into. Uh, I think the bigger part for us is, you know, we're, we're doing this program for, you know, the lease we're signing with these folks, like they could stay forever. This is a two hundred, you know, ninety-nine year renewable lease.
Okay.
So really, you know, we're looking at putting up homes that are in that mid-price range that, you know, for us to build them, that have, you know, mid-level finishes, uh, things that are going to last for the next sixty, seventy years, right? Because we, we want to see five, six, seven families, you know, hopefully take care and maintain these homes and we don't got to put another dime into them for the next fifty, sixty years. We just keep reselling them to the, to the next family.
Okay.
So, so that, that's part of the reason why we, um, definitely go with a, a more of a mid-level home than we build it.
Well, and we get some more to go through and, and what, uh, where we're at on time here, but, uh, if you want to, yeah, keep, or run through the rest, I know we hijacked you and asked you some questions there.
Yeah, I, I don't know what we're at for time, so I'm, I'm looking, I'm looking to you guys.
Yeah, we're, we're getting to, yeah, we still got about another fifteen minutes or so, I think, so.
Okay. Um, I, I shouldn't need that much. This graph here is.
Oh, no, you're, and then I was looking at housing trust fund. Actually, we're pretty close to on, on, up on time, so. So, but we can, you know, we could get a little leeway, so go, go ahead and run through the rest of it here and wrap her up.
This, uh, this gra, this graphic you could take a look at, this is just explaining kind of the word problem I had before on the PowerPoint of that market rate price and the ongoing affordability. The one thing I do like to call about in here is, is, you know, to, to some, to some degree, um, it, I, I, it's simple to say we're going to resell it at one ninety. As you can see with the hundred and fifty thousand dollars, that's an ongoing affordability. That, that stays with the home. So that gives us some leeway. So let's just say the home does sell and in, in John, to John's question, there was some maintenance that needed to happen. We could take some of that hundred and fifty thousand dollars, put it into the home and then say, instead of selling it for one ninety, we put it on the market at two twenty. Right? So it, it gives us some flexibility to make sure that those upgrades happen, so.
Or you could take the thirty thousand in appreciation and use to do up, upkeep, maintenance and not, and still sell it for the three forty or, or whatever, couldn't you?
Um, I'm not sure I quite understand.
Well, if it, I mean, the, you, it appreciated in value, you only gave away ten thousand to the previous owner. So you got thirty thousand in profit, if you will, to do maintenance, upkeep, whatever.
Yep. And that, and then that thirty thousand is exactly, that's what, so that hundred and fifty thousand dollars is made up of that initial one twenty plus the thirty thousand that came in after it sold.
Yeah, I was forgetting that was only one twenty, I was thinking it was one fifty was what we started with, but it was, yeah, you're right.
With one, yep. So, yeah, exactly, you're exactly right. We'd use that thirty thousand to, really, our goal is to make it, uh, we understand that people that are buying our homes are gonna, they have really great income, but it's still limited. And we don't want to put somebody in a situation where a new roof is gonna make them have to sell their house.
Right.
Right? So as much as we can put them, set them up for success, that's our goal. Um, I'm gonna, in the interest of time, I'm going to skip just to eligibility. So, um, generally, we look off, uh, the Greater Minnesota Income Limit, so eighty percent of Minnesota Housing's income limits. When we have Minnesota Housing Funding, we can, um, with our program, uh, go up to a hundred and fifteen percent, um, which is closer to around a hundred and twenty thousand dollars for a, for a household. And then we also look to have, you know, with Minnesota Housing, twenty-five to thirty percent of a household's gross monthly income goes towards their mortgage payment. That's pretty steep. So we, we do, we do end up requesting a waiver for Minnesota Housing sometimes to get that down to like twenty-two percent. It's, it's just, you know, when you think twenty-five to thirty percent of someone's income, that's when we're seeing, you know, hey, your payment would be nineteen fifty and they're going, I just can't do it. So then we worked with Minnesota Housing to try and get that payment down a little bit lower, um, into like the fifteen, sixteen range. And then just, I wanted to highlight that we, we do not, we do not finance these homes for the buyer. Obviously, we finance construction and things like that, but the, um, buyer goes and finds their own financing on the traditional market. We ensure that they can, you know, get access to any program that can help them, um, whether it's Minnesota Housing or friends at MM CDC or, you know, county down payment assistance, whatever it is. Um, but they're working with, um, a local bank.
They're not able to, to utilize the hundred and twenty thousand as any kind of down payment or any kind of equity towards, uh, being able to get.
We can, yeah, we can cover down, we can cover some down payment and we're really flexible with that hundred and twenty covers.
Okay. So they don't necessarily have to come up with twenty grand or whatever for a down payment when they're a young couple maybe and don't have any money in the bank.
Great, great question. We, we, we look for a, a thousand dollars in cash.
Okay.
So it's five hundred dollars at, at the time they sign the purchase agreement and five hundred dollars at closing.
Okay.
Um, that, that's the minimum. Um, and then I just wanted to highlight with North Star Neighbors, we haven't launched this program yet, but we've, we're, we're definitely really focused on new construction. But we also have some funds that are focused on a, a home buyer initiated program. And basically, everything works the same, except we can help someone go out on the open market and purchase a home that's, that's already existing. So that might be a, you know, that might be where we find some homes that are in really good shape, that we're lucky enough that are at two hundred and twenty-five thousand. And we could get those down to maybe one thirty or something like that, right?
Do you already have land designated or that, that Northwest or North Star or whatever has that, that you already own the land where these homes would go?
Um, not, we do not have a title to land right now. We have partnerships lined up for purchase, um, to make it happen.
Okay.
Um. Any other questions or?
And anybody else have any other questions? All right. Great. Thank you, Corey. Appreciate all the help and info.
Thank you.
Bring this housing trust fund, funding recommendations. Hey, Ann.
Hello. Good afternoon, Commissioners. Ann Lynn Seth, Director of Health and Human Services, and I'm here today representing our Beltrami County Housing Trust Fund Cabinet. Um, I do want to provide a brief background on our Beltrami County Housing Trust Fund for those tuning in. Um, our housing trust fund was established in two thousand and twenty-three when the Beltrami County Board passed ordinance number fifty. It's funded by statewide affordable housing and local homeless prevention aid, which is Department of Revenue funding that comes to the county and then is passed through per the ordinance to our housing trust fund, which is administered by the United Way. The United Way then set up the Housing Trust Fund Cabinet, um, to look at how to support projects in our community, um, that have innovative solutions to enhance housing availability, affordability and accessibility for individuals and families in Beltrami County. So in two thousand and twenty-three, we focused on the establishment of the Housing Trust Fund. In two thousand and twenty-four, the cabinet did a lot of work to educate themselves around what's available in Beltrami County, um, what current initiatives around housing were already occurring, what the gaps were. Um, and also with the very specific requirements some of, uh, on some of that Department of Revenue funding that funds our housing trust fund. In two thousand and twenty-five, we're focusing on, um, allocating funds out of the trust fund. We actually already have allocated, um, agency-specific funding through an agency-specific RFP that the cabinet opened up in late two thousand and twenty-four. Um, and forty-nine thousand five hundred dollars was already issued to those agencies. I'm here today to make the recommendations regarding our development RFP, um, that was released late in two thousand and twenty-four and closed while there was a process, which I will go through with you. Just as a reminder, this is who makes up our Housing Trust Fund Cabinet. The cabinet was set up to ensure diverse representation and a variety of areas of expertise around housing as we make recommendations for funding out of the trust fund. There was a process that was gone through with the development RFP. Um, we did do a pre-application that was released, um, December fifth of twenty-four, that closed January thirty-first of twenty-five. We did a pre-application because we wanted to have developers have a short option to fill out for us as a cabinet to figure out if they met all of the eligibility requirements, both in the ordinance and through the funding sources that fund the trust. Um, that pre-application was then reviewed by the cabinet for those eligibility criterias. And then those meeting the eligibility criterias were invited to complete a full application. And that full application process was completed between March eighteenth and April eleventh of twenty-five. Once those full applications were received by the cabinet, we scored and vetted the applications. And then now we're here today to make the recommendations for funding. Um, the funding recommendation also was passed through the United Way Board on May twenty-first. So there are two recommendations. Um, there were a total of three applications, three full applications that were completed. Two of the applications met all eligibility criteria to move forward and are being recommended for funding. The first is North Star Neighbors. Um, they are requesting three hundred thousand dollars out of the Housing Trust Fund to build two single-family homes located in the Beartooth Development, which is on the south end of town. Um, again, Corey just went through the target for earnings. They can go up to the hundred and fifteen percent of state median income, but their target is around a little less than ninety thousand for the household income. And the housing trust funds would be used to buy down that purchase price of the home, making it more affordable and making it more affordable for generations to come, as you just heard. Um, this particular request is, um, requesting the three hundred thousand dollars to start two builds this summer, so a very quick turnaround time. Um, and the full three hundred thousand dollars would be used as buy down for those two homes, so a hundred and fifty thousand dollars apiece. Um, without the Housing Trust Fund investment of three hundred thousand dollars, again, their program would move forward, but these houses would not be built this quickly. Um, so they do need this funding to build these homes in the summer of two thousand and twenty-five. So meeting an immediate need for our community. The second request is a request again from North Star Neighbors for two hundred and twenty thousand dollars. And this is to build eight single-family homes. Again, located in the Beartooth Development, um, same target income, same idea of buying down the purchase price of the homes um, and keeping that purchase price low for generations to come. These homes would be built over the next three years. So again, meeting some of our housing continuum needs, but not as immediate as the initial request. Um, so a longer-term project. Um, this particular request, uh, North Star Neighbors would, would need the two hundred and twenty thousand dollars as matching grant to, um, apply and secure other funding for the project. So those are the two requests and recommendations that are being made by the Housing Trust Fund Cabinet. Um, there are some next steps. So if the board does, uh, approve these two recommendations, then agreements would be developed, uh, through the United Way, so some contractual agreements. The projects would be tracked for completion and impact. Um, we of course would require compliance with ongoing monitoring and reporting of, of the awarded entity. And then, um, this, if, if both requests were approved, we would be expending five hundred and twenty thousand dollars out of our Housing Trust Fund. It would leave some funding in the trust and then the cabinet would assess, um, when to open another RFP process. So just as a reminder to the board and to share with the community, there was a principal fund balance in our Housing Trust Fund of one point two five seven million dollars. Uh, we awarded out forty-nine thousand five hundred to St. Vincent de Paul and BiCap through our agency RFP. Um, there has been interest earned of twenty-three thousand one hundred and seventy-eight dollars as of April thirtieth. Um, through our United Way partnerships, uh, they have secured community donations of fifty thousand dollars, which is wonderful. We also, um, as a partnership with United Way, uh, applied for Housing Trust Fund Grant, um, which we were awarded and those funds are not currently in the pot, but they are on their way. And so the Housing Trust Fund balance currently is one million, three hundred and fifty-six thousand, six hundred and eighty dollars. We have not received any of our two thousand and twenty-five allocations from the Department of Revenue for the Local Homeless Prevention Aid or the Statewide Affordable Housing Aid. Those allocations are provided in June and December, so we will be receiving half of our full allocation here shortly. Um, the two thousand and twenty-five allocation that will go into our Housing Trust Fund from those two Department of Revenue sources are three hundred and seventy-three thousand, eight hundred and eighty-two dollars. So we'll get half of that in June and half in December. So additional funds will be going into the trust fund shortly. Um, I also was notified late last week by the United Way that, uh, we received an additional twenty thousand dollars for the Housing Trust Fund, um, through First National Bank. So we are very excited to see that we have continued variety of sources going into the trust fund. So with that, there's those two recommendations for the board, um, from the cabinet. Do you have any questions for me?
Commissioner Carlson?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Ann, did the committee discuss or take into account the opportunity cost of two twenty-seven thousand, five hundred dollar investment per house on eight houses in that project versus a hundred and fifty thousand dollar? And how much more you could do in the future versus the immediacy of having two houses? And would that impact us dramatically versus that we could afford a lot more houses at, over time?
Yes, we did have that conversation. And there was some philosophy around wanting to meet an immediate housing need in our community. But certainly, um, you know, investing two twenty to, to have eight homes, um, would create more in the long run. Um, but ultimately, like I said, without the three hundred thousand dollar investment, it would take a longer period of time to start the build on those homes. So I guess that is the decision before the board today.
And, and then I'm wondering, uh, follow-up. Are we aware of any, I, I know that Sanford has been begging to do a housing project and I don't know where they're at with that. And I don't know if anyone's available to speak to that. Uh, you know, I, I'm guessing that, that Sanford would be willing to invest a substantial amount of money if they could get a little help from our Housing Trust Fund and maybe we could build fifty houses. But, you know, I'm, see where I'm going with that. I just.
I probably know as much as you do, Commissioner Carlson, about Sanford's plans for housing. Um, but I do know that we have strong partnerships with Sanford and we have ongoing communication around those, their plans for housing. And so we want to continue that partnership in whatever form that takes in the future.
And, and so if we, if we burn through three hundred thousand dollars on two houses, we, we, we might be losing out on an opportunity to build fifty houses. Potentially.
We do still have a substantial balance left, so it's not like we wouldn't be able to take three hundred thousand from that to do the fifty houses theoretical thing too.
Yeah, and I get that, uh, Mr. Chair, but it, it doesn't seem fair that we subsidize two houses at a hundred and fifty and then we go down the road and we only subsidize at thirty thousand. There, there seems to be a fairness factor there.
Yep. I agree. I saw that too. I was, I actually had a conversation with Ann prior to the meeting because I was wondering why the discrepancy there and, and, um, and for whatever reason, the lack of being able to get the, uh, the money from the other source this quickly apparently is part of the answer.
I think, Mr. Chair, I, it's going to be my wish that we pull that off the consent agenda and discuss it because I'm generally in favor of the two hundred and twenty. But I'm not very much in favor of spending three hundred thousand dollars on two houses, so I'd like to pull that off.
Commissioner Winger, if you can make note of that for.
Thank you.
Pulling that item off of consent. Anybody else have any questions for Ann? Commissioner Sumner?
Well, Mr. Chair, I have, uh, all this, the questions, but if it's going to be pulled to consent, uh, off consent, I'll, I'll wait till then.
Okay.
Okay. Thank you, Commissioner.
All right. Thank you, Ann. All right, that brings us to the mailbox support policy. I think Bruce is here for that.
Good afternoon, Commissioners. The item I have in front of you is a, a potential mailbox support policy. Uh, currently, we do not have a standalone mailbox support policy. We do have parts of it elsewhere. Um, the part where, uh, if we hit one with a snowplow, we'll replace it. That is in our snow and ice control policy. It is also our standard practice to, uh, replace all non-conforming mailbox, the non, um, swingaway supports on our construction projects, no cost to the, to the owner. Um, and then, uh, the last couple of years, we have incentivized the use of them. Uh, we do not charge for the, the installation. We do not charge for the the installation, the actual, the furnace, furnish and install of the swingaway supports on our on county roads. There is a huge benefit to putting these swingaway supports in. When they're installed correctly and maintained correctly, the snowplow blade will go underneath the the mailbox. And then the snow, if it does come off and hit it, that there's some give or some swing to those supports. We're not perfect, I see. Commissioner Goss big there smiling. Yeah, perfect, we do hit mailboxes occasionally. But this here does help with the snow coming off the end. And again, allowing us to clean the snow in front of the mailbox versus one that's on a straight pool. So there's a benefit to having these. With our upcoming grant that we have next year, we got a grant to replace all the mailboxes on county roads to the swingaway supports. And so to have a policy in place ahead of time would be beneficial to ensure that we continue to have all swingaway supports on our on our county roads. So we don't go out there next year, replace them all, and then someone comes in and they start putting in regular posts. So this this policy would be a huge benefit for our grant, upcoming grant and into the future. And so I guess I have that.
Questions for Bruce?
Mr. Chair?
Go ahead, Commissioner Sumner.
Bruce, can we strive for perfection?
Sorry, what's that?
Can we strive for perfection?
We're striving for it.
I was kidding. You mentioned a grant to replace these mailboxes. How much is the grant? I just wanna make sure that we're 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 accounting for, you know, the cost of I I imagine this isn't a a cheap project to
No, one hundred and seventy-three thousand two hundred and forty dollars.
Off the top of my head, I kinda remember what the grant was, but it was, I mean, we went through an estimated how many supports we had across the county, and it wasn't gonna be enough to replace them.
It was going to, and if there isn't, it's coming out of Greg's district?
That that grant was a ninety-ten grants, there's already a share. The share comes off of the funding for what type of road? So if it's on a state aid route, it would be stated in construction dollars. A county road would be local levy dollars, but there's a share already for those.
Okay, thank you.
Anybody else have any questions for Bruce? They did they did come out right away and replace mine, and I much appreciated that. Yes, Commissioner Gold?
How how long a project, how long will this take to do countywide?
We will. We haven't started putting the plans together. We gotta go through and actually put down addresses and have that all in the the plans for the contractor. We'll put it out for bids next spring. And I mean, we'll give them a timeframe. I'm assuming we're gonna give them a kind of that summer season like we do with our other projects. And so we'll you know, that September, by next September, we'll have it, have them completed.
Bruce, on the, I know it's a mailbox support, do we, what do we do if it's like one of those mailboxes that like they're all, if there was existing all plastic or whatever, and there isn't an actual mailbox to mount to our support? Do we provide the mailbox, too, or not?
Yeah, good question. On, I mean, if we if we hit one of those right now in the wintertime, they would get a support in a mailbox.
Okay.
And for the replacement, I guess I hadn't really thought about the
The actual mailbox portion of it?
Yeah.
Cause not all of them are actual mailboxes, it could be.
I'm assuming there, we're gonna provide the mailbox because it would have to fit, have to conform to our support, so.
My mailbox actually survived even though the post didn't. Because I, many years ago, I bought a vandal-resistant one. It was like really heavy steel. Yeah. Anybody else have any final questions? No? All right, I think that's it for that one. Bruce, are you up again here?
Nope.
Nope, all right.
Thank you.
Thank you. What's that? Yeah, that's a regular agenda item, yep. Now, we got Administrator Barry with the next one here.
Good afternoon, Mr. Chair, Commissioners. As you know, the county provides a quarterly newsletter to our residents, and that gets published four times a year. And recently, we've had requests that have come from non-county sources to place information into our newsletter. And so without a policy and in response to those requests, the Newsletter Committee took it upon itself to evaluate those requests and how to handle those requests in the future going forward. And it's developed a policy that we have submitted for your review and consideration this afternoon. And I'll just run through elements of the policy here. First of all, it first starts off with the purpose of the newsletter to define specifically why the newsletter is beneficial and why we should continue to publish the newsletter. And then it goes into the oversight. Obviously, this isn't a standard, you know, newspaper type of publication, it's a newsletter by a government organization. And so essentially, we develop this newsletter by committee. And so it identifies who those committee members are, and these are essentially just memorializing the existing members, which include two county board members, the sheriff, the public information officer, the executive administrative specialist, and the county administrator. And the idea here is to define that group as the editor-in-chief so that there is no one person that's calling all the shots when it comes to development of the newsletter, that we work by committee to identify stories, edit those stories, develop other content and information that goes into the newsletter. So that is what the oversight role of this committee is. And the committee itself has the direction per policy that we're recommending for setting the tone and direction, determining the overall style, voice, and perspective, determining the content, the printing standards, and also the timeframes for publication, establishing and enforcing editorial guidelines and standards for uniformity and consistency, and making the final decisions on what gets published in the newsletter. The goals have also been defined in this newsletter policy. And that is to raise awareness of important issues, of course, promote county projects and programs and services, disseminate information as widely as we can to our citizens, business owners and such, share relevant and timely information with the public, build community cohesion, understanding and support, and then finally encourage community participation in county activities. Finally, on the last page there, we talk about editorial standards, and this is where we get kind of the meat of the policy as it relates to what the authority and duty and responsibility of the committee is in regard to developing the newsletter. And so here, we've identified that the importance of ensuring accuracy and transparency in the work that we do, remaining timely, independent, and neutral, with emphasis on making no politi- political statements or politicizing any type of view inside the newsletter. We've also identified that we do not want to accept donations for the newsletter or aside from county partnership organizations, no outside advertising would be allowed in the newsletter as well to keep impartial and independent of the newsletter from those potential conflicts. Also, we've identified the importance of self-generating content, again, for impartiality, and that no letters to the editor or opinion pieces would be allowed under this policy, and that no unsolicited or outside content would be allowed inside the newsletter as well. Accessibility is also highlighted as an important piece inside the policy as well as privacy compliance. And then finally, the Newsletter Committee's duties are also listed down there as it relates to the functional responsibilities of the Newsletter Committee as editor-in-chief of the county's newsletter. So that's what I have for you, kind of in brief. Hopefully, you've had an opportunity to go through it, but I'll stand for any questions you might have. This is also on the regular agenda, but if you need more time, you know, there's no rush to get this approved, so. But we wanted to at least get it in front of you, have a look at it, and see if you had any questions, concerns, or any edits that the Newsletter Committee may want to make in its final recommendation.
Administrator Barry, do we, and I should know this, but do we publish the the newsletter on our website?
We do, yes.
So we have, we do have a link on our website.
Correct.
So people, for whatever reason, if they don't get it in paper form, they can still read it.
Absolutely, it's available on the website. We're also working with the PIO to try to tag the newsletter's release into social media that would then refer people back also to the county's website as well.
Perfect. Anybody else have any questions for Administrator Barry with regard to the newsletter policy? Commissioner Sumner?
But Tom, I see the Oversight Committee or the Newsletter Committee includes the sheriff. I'm I'm just kind of curious how that came about and
That is historic, actually. I inherited the sheriff on the committee when we, when when I came to the county, and so that position has kind of always been there. It is your newsletter and your newsletter committee, and so you can appoint whoever you'd like to that particular committee. But the membership that exists currently is just membership that has been on there for at least half a decade or more.
Okay. And also, there was a mention of social media. I know this, this isn't included in this, but are there discussions about social media? Cause I've I've noticed that the county is is taking more of an active role on on Facebook. And I just wanna see if you, as the administrator, are developing a policy for for the social media use.
That's a great question, and it's separate from this, so I don't want to confuse the topics. But yes, we've actually had our PIO come in to the management team and talk about social media and specifically what the Sheriff's Office is doing, because our PIO has shared that position with the Sheriff's Office, Chris Muller. And so what we are attempting to do is increase our social media presence, but we've been very prescriptive about how we want to do that. At this point in time, what we are attempting to do is push information and not exchange information. The concern by the management team is the amount of time and oversight that would be required to do that at this point in time is something that's beyond our reach at the moment. So instead, the attempt is being made to push more information on a generalized county Facebook page and not necessarily through the Sheriff's Office page, which is how we've kind of been ad hoc doing it for the last, you know, six, seven years or so. So yeah, we're we're attempting to do that, but we're slowly moving into that realm. And the idea is to, again, push information through that particular media and then bring people back to the website where they can then spend time exploring whatever content they're interested in.
Thank you for that update.
Anybody else? You wanna move into your administrator's update?
Sure. Think I left it on the chair here.
Sure.
All right, for the administrator's report, I was gonna talk a little bit about the jail project. We seem to bring that up every time we meet, there's a lot of progress going on. First of all, I'll start with the revenue side of the jail project so far. As you know, the local option sales tax that was approved was initiated in July of last year. So we've been monitoring collections. Of course, this is important for us to understand what the spending ratio of the project itself against the earnings of the lost revenue are. And so at this point in time, I'm happy to report that we're almost exactly with the eight months of data that we've been tracking, exactly on track. There have been some months where we've been concerned that we're falling short, maybe in one or two months by as much as fifty or a hundred thousand dollars for that month of collection, but then we make it up in another month later. So right now, for eight months of data, we're we're tracking nicely. We'll continue to monitor that as we go forward. Of course, we are trying to time the issuance of the second bond. And so in order to do that, we're monitoring not just our spend ratios and our earnings, but we're also monitoring the bond climate itself, interest rates, for example. There was some concern early, maybe six months or so ago. There was some chirping around whether or not tax-exempt bonds might no longer be tax-exempt, for example. So we we looked at that, I know about four, five, six years ago that came up. So that would be a concern for us as well. So we're just, we're kind of monitoring what is going on. We don't think that's an issue any longer. The spend rate is on track, the project is on schedule, so that's good news as well. There's been no surprises, really, on the project, and that's good because we're just at the beginning of it. We expect about a three-month lead time that would be needed in order to issue the second bond. Recall that it's an eighty million dollar project. We have forty million that's already been scheduled out and or sold in bonds, and then the other forty, we hope, would be slightly less than that, maybe thirty-five, will come, you know, maybe around January time. So we'll have to start working on that second bond issuance likely in September, October time of this year, if everything remains on track. As it relates to construction, the project is proceeding very nicely. There's been footing and foundations that have gone in, most of the perimeter walls, or I should say footings, rather, are in, and so you can see the footprint pretty nicely. If you can kind of get up and and look down on it a little bit, I've sent a couple of pictures to you via email. The stormwater pond is taking shape as well. And just in about five weeks or so, we're gonna go vertical. And then the project will look entirely different. So we'll have precast walls, they're, we're planning to have them arrive somewhere around July fourteenth or so. And then those will go up pretty quick, and then the building will really take its form after that. So things are going pretty well that way. On another note, union negotiations, we have received notices to begin negotiations from six of our eight unions. We've been in conversation with them and are planning to try to engage maybe July sometime. And the reason this has been pushed off a little bit is because we we don't really know what's going on with the state budget, right? So if we don't know what our financial impact is going to be due to the anticipated cost shifts that the state has been talking about in the governor, the governor's office, and then then we we won't really know what we can and can't do for that matter. So we're just kind of delaying at the moment until we figure out where the state lands, and then we understand what the impact is, and then we can engage in a more knowledgeable form. So both sides are preparing to meet, and as I say, we hope to maybe engage in July sometime. On the legislative front, since I brought that up, I was just gonna mention that the legislature, of course, did not finish their work this year on time. And so a special session is highly likely to be called in order for them to at least pass a budget. The committees are still working informally, and so the special session has not been called yet. I believe that the governor is intending to wait till most of this committee work and agreements inside the committees are sort of pretty well finalized. And then at that point in time, a special session will likely be called sometime during June, we anticipate. Of course, that's the end of the fiscal year, it's June thirtieth for the state. And so so that's what we're gonna be watching for. So we expect some things to sort of shake loose here over the next couple of weeks. The Human Services Working Group, which that was the group we were the most concerned about because it had included the majority of significant cost shifts in early discussions to counties, has reached a tentative agreement that was signed in the form of a spreadsheet. Of course, the bill language isn't, doesn't exist, so we don't know what's in it. But essentially, based upon what we have evaluated from the spreadsheet, it looks to be significantly more favorable. It's not great, but we're not talking about, you know, that the one or two million dollars worth of cost shifts that we are anticipating. We're probably talking maybe a couple hundred thousand, possibly a little more than that. So again, we just don't know the details yet of that particular work groups until we get that bill language. On the Tax Committee, the outlook is just completely unknown at this point in time. We we just don't know where that group is. We have heard that there was some conversation about reducing PILT payments by as much as thirty-four percent. That would be an impact to the county of one point one million dollars. That's pretty significant. It would require maybe three, three and a half percent of a levy adjustment if we weren't to find cuts to offset that reduction in state funding. So that's something that we're also tracking. County Program Aid was discussed for a little while, as well as maybe having some adjustments there. But there's nothing concrete, we just don't know where we're at there. So I can't give you much information about what we anticipate, at least at this point in time. All right, so then let's go to the county budget process, because all of this is kind of hinging on the county budget process. Appreciate your passage of the budget principles and priorities. We did start officially our budget kickoff last week with the management team. And the next two weeks or so, there will be line item budgets, capital improvement budgets, and narratives in addition to some other ancillary components of the budget that are being developed by the department heads. uh, some other ancillary, uh, components of the budget that are being developed by the department heads. At which point we'll take a couple of weeks and I'll review information and meet with department heads. At which point we'll refine the budgets, uh, try to get to a preliminary levy, uh, probably refine budgets again after that. And then eventually bring that to the budget committee. So that's what the work looks like between now and early August. I think the staff are highly committed, uh, to incorporating, uh, the budget principles, uh, into their budgets this year. And, and I, I have every reason to believe that they'll meet the mark when it comes to, uh, the budget setting goals for this year. Lastly, I was gonna give you a couple of reminders that the AMC District Two meeting, that's our District Two meeting, uh, occurs on Wednesday this week in the boardroom right here at eight o'clock, if you're interested in attending. Uh, and then finally, the county's wellness expo, I believe this is our third year, uh, doing this. That's going to take place on Thursday, June the twelfth. Uh, and that'll be here on campus. It'll be in this building and also in the, um, courtyard between us and the community services center building. And that'll happen from eleven until two in the afternoon, next Thursday, uh, June the twelfth. That's all I have for you, but I'll stand for any questions you might have.
Commissioner Carlson?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Um, Tom, you talked about the updates on the jail and, and the looking down at it, the drone view. I'm just wondering, we get that nice weekly update from Carl Sanderson that, that you've been forwarding to all of us. It's really great. Is there, are, are we putting that on the website?
You know, we, Commissioner Carlson, we haven't. We more or less abandoned the jail project website page uh, for, for sort of two reasons. Its initial intent was to, uh, engage the community in what to do and how to do it, what kind of programs and, and that sort of stuff. And we've achieved that, you know, we did surveys, we did a number of things. This, the second thing probably more realistically as to why it went away is we had a website update and, um, we, we essentially haven't included that in that update. So, uh, it's not something we couldn't do. Uh, we could maybe restart that page and then simply take those updates and just shove them in. It'd be pretty easy. A little bit clunky, nothing fancy, but certainly it would give the community an update on, on what's, uh, what's being done. I would wanna talk with, um, the author of that particular uh, publication and ensure they understand that it would, if we, if you intend for it to be, that it would be public. Cause sometimes there's proprietary information included in those. So another reason we haven't just shoved it onto the website.
Um, Administrator Barry, I'm wondering, you mentioned about the financing of the, the jail project, but where, if you have a brief update on the, uh, assessment of the old facility and what, where that's at, what, what that's looking like, if anything yet, or?
Yes, uh, thank, I'm, thank you for asking that. I didn't have that in my update. Because I can tell you where we're at, but we just don't have a recommendation yet. So, uh, we are looking at the three options. The first option is of course a complete remodel of the entire facility. Uh, under that option, um, it looks pretty intensive, uh, to do, but, uh, there are columns and exterior perimeter wall structure that we could leave. And then the question becomes, okay, you've gonna have maybe fifty-five thousand square feet of vacant space. What then is the intention? There's been some conversation around, well, we don't wanna get into the leasing business just to get into the leasing business and compete with private sector on that front. Uh, we already have a lot of vacancy in certain areas for commercial buildings and office space and that sort of stuff. So we've been putting another fifty-five thousand square feet po- possibly on the market. Uh, that could be a challenge. Uh, the second thing is it'd be rather expensive for us to hold that open space, uh, with the infrastructure that we have over there that's not super efficient either. Uh, so based on that and, and some of the structural and the costs associated with that particular option, uh, I, I don't believe, and I, and don't quote me because we started looking at it, but I don't know that we're really probably going to have that as a viable option. Uh, that leads to the second option, which is a partial tear down, um, and remodel. Uh, that likely looks like tearing down the housing blocks of the existing jail, uh, maybe the old Sally Port and potentially leaving the administrative offices, the kitchen area, kind of the areas that we've already improved, uh, a few years ago. Uh, the challenge that comes with that option is that there's quite a bit of infrastructure. Um, this would be electrical, mechanical, HVAC, plumbing, infrastructure that's located in one of the housing block basements that, uh, would need to be relocated. Uh, or potentially there is an, we're looking at whether or not we can sort of steal those services from the existing courthouse annex. And if we could, that would save some money. Um, in that option, we would have to rebuild the Sally Port. And, uh, we have an option that looks pretty favorable for actually doing that and utilizing partially the existing tunnel so that we have ingress and egress of inmates, uh, much the same way that it's currently occurring. Uh, the last option is, you know, kind of tear everything down. Uh, and then that's option also includes this same concept for a standalone Sally Port, uh, that would have an elevator that would go down to the, uh, tunnel and then underneath the parking lot and into the courthouse. So those are our three options. Uh, I think we've got a couple more weeks to kind of vet out this and in particular, put some costs to it. So, uh, we do have concepts, but till we get the costs, we just won't really know. Uh, but the board will likely have to think through that question on that first option. Do you wanna have a lot of vacant space? You know, on the market per se or just held indefinitely at, you know, maintenance costs, so.
Well, a lot of it'll be depending upon what those rough costs look like too. It is, if it's even feasible to do that first option, which I did not think it probably would be based on what we'll have for the max budget. But, uh, just looking for, um, where we're at, we're still in the process of developing it. That, thank you for the update. All right. Anybody else? All right. We will adjourn until five o'clock.